Welcome to the February 1st, 2021. First day of winter tomorrow, by the way. Select Board meeting, so thank you very much. I'm glad to see that there's a good number of additional participants here. So thanks for for being here. We will start with the minutes of the Select Board meeting from January 11, 2021, that are in your packets.
Make a motion to accept the minutes as presented.
Is there a second, please?
A second, a couple of little typos, but doesn't does it impact the sense of the minutes?
Okay, great. So it's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes from July, from, excuse me, January 11, 2021. I'll go ahead and call the roll. Dennis?
Yes.
Yes. Catherine?
Yes.
Chris?
I abstain, I missed that meeting.
Okay, and what did I mean? I did miss somebody, right?
Ralph.
Ralph, excuse me, Ralph, hi.
Hi, yes.
And Bruce is a yes. I'll try to go a little bit more efficiently on those. Warrants 29 and 30 are next. That is, that passed, by the way. Who reviewed 29 and 30?
I think they belong to me, Bruce.
I think they do, Ralph. Go ahead.
Okay. 129. 181, 906, 68, and then A and B, which I think were treasurer's segments. 1,008, 9, and 3,011, 12, 20. And then payroll is separate. So the highlights of the 181,000 would be 11,183.5 for a skid steer payment, a $4,000 audit incremental payment. Another big ticket guy was the health insurance tab for the month, 9,412.78. And then our property casualty insurance to NMA for 10,569.50. And then the big hit, 123, 3857 for the county. So and I think as the as the document was structured, we added the payroll to it, which was number 30, 15, 880, 24. And that aggregate number was 197, 786, 92, if I am correct.
No, we have a different number, Ralph.
You have one. Go ahead. Catherine.
Was was added, there's a postage charge in addition to that of 2,697, which I think boosted the number, the 199, 793, 89.
Yes, that's what we have.
Okay, but that is that is now 29, A, B, 30, and 31.
Right, okay, great. I misread that, so 30 should have perhaps been a little bit more to the left in that column. Great, so do I have a motion on the warrants?
I'll make a motion to approve warrants 29, 30, and 31 as presented.
It's been moved to, for, a second, please?
Second.
It's removed and seconded to approve warrants 29, 30, and 31 in the amount of 199, 793, and 89 cents. Is there any discussion or questions on those warrant articles?
I'll just mention that that was the second half of the Kennebec County tax, so that's now done for the year.
Thank you for that update. Any other questions or discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the roll. Dennis?
Yes.
Catherine?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Ralph?
Yes.
And I'll, and I'm a yes as well, so the warrants are approved. We'll move on to Select Board communications. Do any members of the Select Board have anything that they would like to go ahead and and bring up? Dennis, you're first.
Hi, yes. This year, we are planning to have our annual Heritage Days celebration. We are looking for members of the Heritage Days Committee. And this year, we have an interesting idea to have all the committees in Reed Field have a participation part of Heritage Days. What does that committee do? Basically, how could we have people, you know, if people want to set up and things like that? But it's really an opportunity for the people who work and help improve our town to be seen and have a great time. So if you are interested in being a part of the Heritage Days Committee, you can do that. You need to fill out a volunteer form. You can actually get in touch with me at my email on the website, on the town website. And you can get in touch with me and I can sort of put you in the right place. But we're looking for a group of folks who are interested and have some ideas and want to do some fun stuff for a celebration of Reed Field. So Heritage Days 2021. Thank you.
Great. Any other board members?
If someone's already on a committee, do they still need to fill in another volunteer form?
I don't think that that's true, because we'll have it on on already.
So just send you an email?
Yeah, and that way, if you're already on a committee, you don't have to do it. If you're like a committee head or something like that and you want to represent, you know, from whatever committee you might be working with, that's fine, too. But if you're watching this and you're not on a committee, but you like to throw a fun party, sign up and join me.
Go ahead, Catherine, please.
So there's nothing on the agenda tonight for fiber to the home, so I'd like to make a little report out. I've been to the last two meetings of the Western Kennebec Lakes Region Community Broadband Association. I got that. Um, and we have a few updates. One is that the committee feels that they've pretty much finished up what they can do at this point in time, given the last update that this Select Board and everyone else approved. Eric, there was a question if we had ever sent that last approval letter over, so could you check on that? Joe Young wasn't sure if he just misplaced it or if we didn't send it. But I know that we signed it.
Yeah, I'll check on that and send it over if it wasn't.
Okay. So where we're at now is that all of the towns are making a decision on whether they want to do a build out with their current provider to fill in gaps and unserved areas or build a fiber to the home network similar to what Reed Field's looking at. I think the count right now is three, building a network, one, building a half a network, and two are, one's undecided, because their Select Board hasn't met yet to just bring it up. So what the committee is going to do right now is just keep encouraging people to visit the site and to have each Select Board continue moving it forward in their town and report back once a month on how progress is going. I did let them know that our board had some concerns about public participation and the volume of that, and they were all astounded that we had over 250 responses. No one else has anywhere near that kind of a response. They thought that was awesome and that we should keep up the good work and that moving forward with putting something on this year's warrant is what everybody's hoping to look to do. So I will provide updates as they come. And Eric and I are going to try and form the broadband committee this week.
Thank you, Catherine, for that update. I'll just comment that our population is greater than most of those other towns. So I don't know on a percentage wise what that represents, but what we've gathered so far is just absolutely awesome. And we hope to see much more of it as we move forward and get more information out there, because we do need that public participation.
Yep, there are about 50 or so from each of the other towns, and they're about half of our size.
Yeah, so they are way behind.
Yep.
Yeah, great. I'll just mention for myself that I've not yet convened Parks and Recreation. I do see a few people that are involved in that area here tonight, and that's great. I do intend to try to get that convened in February so we can plug anything into the budget that needs to happen. So those representative committees will get an email from me probably this week. It's on my to-do list, and anytime I have something on my to-do list that needs a little bit of prompting, don't hesitate to stick a stick in this direction. Anybody else on the Select Board have an update? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to town staff reports. Eric? You're muted, Eric. You know, that's the thing everybody in Zoom can say, you're muted.
Yeah, for some reason, I've got dual screens and for my mouse completely disappears. It doesn't just go to the other screen, it disappears in Zoom sometimes, so I have to find it. But anyway, thank you, Bruce. Technology's great. I'll start with my town manager's report and with maintenance and infrastructure. I'm really happy to report that the beach, now that it's plowed out, is seeing a lot of activity. You mentioned that in your article for the messenger, Bruce, that that's open, but we've seen a lot of activity. A ton of people were down there this weekend, and they've got a skating rink started.
Thanks for stealing my my point and being here. Thanks, Eric.
I'm sorry. I'll stop right now. I'll just say the ice fishing's really good. At least I had some good luck with it and, you know, it's good down there. The the winter road maintenance RFP will be going out in February. That'll be revised RFP. We're doing things a little bit differently than we've done in the past after discussing it with the road committee. We're looking at making the term a little bit less, probably a three-year base with an option of one additional, as opposed to four and one. We saw some fatigue, I think, and we want to try to do a little bit better job of making it a competitive process and keeping people interested. So we think that that's going to be a better approach. Also, we'll be adjusting the amount of salt in the salt-sand mix that we have to help, you know, give a little bit more effectiveness to the material that is put down. So perhaps less will be put down, because the sand is becoming quite an issue. And it has since been, you know, started, I guess, 20 years ago, 25 years ago. A paving RFP will also be going out in February. That will be for Plains Road and for the Sturdivant Hill Road. Plains Road is going to be the FY21 budget. Sturdivant Hill will be 22 budget. So we expect both of those will probably be done in FY22, but we will we'll put them together as a single RFP and hopefully get a little bit better pricing on it as a group. The other RFPs that will be going out in February or March will be the fire station and library projects. Those are going to be put forward as design-build, and that's a change from what we've done in the past, where we've had engineering work done and then put the plans out. We're looking to do it differently. I think we can get better value by having, at least with these projects, the design professionals work with the builders directly. Moving on to the transfer station, we do have new lights that were installed near the compactor units that should help quite a bit with evening time usage. And we are working to try to understand if there's a better approach to perimeter lighting, which is basically non-existent right now, and if there's a way to do that within the operating budget without having to get into capital. Also, I am looking at cost estimates for a likely metal-framed structure to cover the compactor units and the lower area at the transfer station. That that's something that, after discussions with the SWRC, may or may not be coming forward with this year's budget, likely not, given the fact that the Solid Waste and Recycling Committee, as it stands right now, the reserve account for the transfer station for the three towns isn't really sufficient to meet the needs or the demands of a debt service payment for any sizable bond. So we're going to talk about it a little bit more, but I think that's probably going to wait. But it doesn't mean we can't get the design and some of the rough work done this year to plan for that. Moving on to administration and personnel, we have a special election on Tuesday, March 9, and that will be at the town office here. It won't be at the Alphonde, as the other one was. It's a smaller election, we're confident we can handle it here. It'll be 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM, and the standard conditions apply for early voting and absentee voting. If you have any questions at all, call Deb at the town office or visit reedfieldmain.org, and we'll have answers there for anything related to that election. The town is now hiring for the following positions: full-time equivalent code enforcement officer, part-time seasonal grounds maintenance, full-time seasonal beach superintendent, and part-time seasonal beach attendants. And we've put notices out for a couple of those, and we'll have a few more going out this week. Definitely trying to find qualified people or people who are willing to be trained. That's very important for all those positions, because we want to find good people that can, you know, learn if necessary. The town office remains open by appointment only during the pandemic. I expect that as numbers drop sometime in February, we likely will be returning to the scenario by which we have the office open, the lobbies open, but we limit to four residents, four customers at a time. And so that is a change that if we start seeing COVID numbers on a daily basis drop to around 200 or less, as they were in October before the spike, we'll be returning to that mode of operation, which should make things easier for residents and staff. The town office will be closed for President's Day on Monday, February 15. And with the state legislative offices closing tomorrow, the February 2nd, I should be clear, the town office and transfer station will also be closed. So that is my summary, and I'm happy to take any questions.
Are there any questions for Eric? Thank you, Erica, for a very thorough report. We'll move on to boards, committees, and commissions. And I'll just start by noting that we have the library board minutes of December 2, 2020 in your packet, and then we'll consider, we're going to consider a trail agreement with the Greater Augusta Utility District. Eric, if you don't mind, we probably, when I set the agenda, that probably should have gone under new business. We won't do that, we'll do a deal with it now, but let's assign it to tracking number 21-078 so it can be discussion tracked and so forth, because I do anticipate we would vote on this. So anyhow, we'll go ahead and we will deal with that piece of business right now. So in your packet is a trail agreement for the Carlton Ponds area. I have been jonesing to walk in that area for a very long time, so I'm very happy to see this. Is there somebody that is from the Trails Committee that wanted to speak to this, or more than one person? So I'll start by recognizing Rob.
Hi, Rob. Hi. I we, I don't believe we've been before the Select Board regarding this particular trail, but we've been working for some time trying to get an agreement to put a trail on that property. And what we're envisioning at this point, it's a it's a very nice property, and there could be a trail around the hillside as well as on the lake. But what we would like to do is start with a trail that goes along the lake, perhaps all the way down to the dam, and then you could connect back to the road that goes through the property, and that would make it a loop trail. And Brian Tarbuck is also here tonight. So if you have specific questions about the property and the history and that sort of thing, I'm sure he can answer them and what the intentions are of the Greater Augusta Utility District regarding the property. The work we've done so far is, we have laid out a rough trail route, but that's it. And so we're waiting to develop an agreement and have a signed agreement in hand before we actually go in and start doing physical work.
Great, go ahead, Dennis, please.
This is, I just, I'm looking at this. This is, is this right across from 135, like you're going to Belgrade? And there was some work that was done in there recently. Was that by the Utilities District? Okay, thank you, Brian. That's all, I got you, I feel you, yeah. Don't worry, I got you, I got you. I just, I noticed that, I wasn't sure, but it seems like with that work, now they they want to sort of operate this trail. I think that's cool, so that's all.
Great. Sean, did you want to speak to this?
Yeah, just, is this going to be something that'll parallel close to the sort of snowmobile trail area? Because I'm familiar with that trail.
Well, I can answer that. I guess it would be subparallel, because the trail we're talking about doing initially is one that would enter a short distance along the snowmobile trail, probably cross the first stream crossing, which is pretty close to the parking area, and then leave the snowmobile trail going to the right or west down to the lake, and then follow the lake down to the close to the dam or perhaps even all the way to the dam, and then it will reconnect to the road/snowmobile trail. So people would have the option, they can either make a loop out of it, they can come down the trail and back the trail, whichever.
Great. Catherine?
So if Brian's here, if he has something to add, that would be great. Is it possible that we could get a diagram at some point? I don't need it in order to vote tonight, but I think I have never been down in there, so I don't really know where you mean, because I haven't been out on a snowmobile there. But this sounds fantastic, and we are going to build it, which means it will be our nickel. Is that correct? And then we're going to maintain it, and then we're responsible for making sure that it only has proper use. Is that what I get out of reading this agreement?
I would say yes. As far as costs, there's no real cost to maintaining it. The only cost might be, we would put in a kiosk, which would be movable if we were to lose access to the property. We expect we would take the kiosk out. There might be some signage, which would be pretty inexpensive. We'll probably end up blazing the trail, which takes a little paint. And most of the time, I just bring my own paint. I don't charge anybody any money for that. So costs to the town are going to be pretty minimal. There may be times that it has to be closed because of things like logging, because God does do logging work there to generate some income from the property. But we expect, once this gets set up, it would be open pretty much year-round during daylight hours.
So the trail actually already exists?
No, the trail doesn't exist.
So who's building the trail and paying for that?
We will build the trail with volunteer labor. It's very open. The amount of actual physical work to build the trail is going to be pretty minimal compared to some other trails we've done. It's not something where we're considering, you know, getting a grant to do the work. We're not talking about Blue Stone. This is going to be a trail through the woods, unimproved trail through the woods.
More like the Esker Trail.
Exactly.
Bruce?
Yes.
Ralph?
Yes, please, Ralph.
Just a couple of questions. I think I've got a partial answer here already in terms of what the development cost the town will be to do this basic, this basic trail. But I looked at the agreement, and it's in one-year increments. And if the town funds the development, and then for some reason, not necessarily that it might be town-driven, the operation is shut down, it just seems to me that perhaps if it's possible that we should extend the agreement from one-year increments to something larger, given the town's commitment to to construction and maintenance.
Yeah, I'll address that. I would tend to disagree. I think a one-year contract, if you will, or agreement is fine initially, and it does have a renewal clause in it. I think the point is that our investment is extremely light in this. This is volunteer labor primarily. We're not putting in a great deal of money. It's all within, if you will, the Trails budget. I don't believe Trails is going to ask for a 100% increased budget or something in order to do this. So I think doing it as initially negotiated, and I'm not sure this is negotiation per se, but conversationally discussed, I think that makes the most sense and then go forward from there. That's my own personal opinion.
I just have one more question. Where would the trailhead be? Where would you access the trail?
Well, the trailhead would be in a parking area right off Route 17, near that junction of 135. When you drive by there now, you'll see there's a gate, and there's, behind that gate, there's kind of a rough parking area.
Okay.
I think Brian intends to upgrade that parking area and would like to put a gate further in, because we don't want any motorized vehicles accessing.
Yeah, I'm just curious. That intersection is such a, like, it's so crazy right in there. So I was just like curious about that, but thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Brian, Brian, do you want to say anything? I want to make sure to recognize you if you'd like to speak.
Yeah, sure, thanks very much. The board that I work for is a nine-person board on the Greater Augusta Utility District, and we've been working with the Refill Trails Committee now for, gosh, over a year on this. I've worked at the Utility District for 20 years, been the general manager for 14 years. And I want to say that the day I got hired, people have been asking, you know, what's out in the woods there? We sure would like to take a look. And we used to use it for drinking water supply from 1903 to 2004. 2004, we abandoned that source of drinking water and went to wells. The wells are easier for us to treat to meet Secure Drinking Water Act standards, including what incomparable, which was difficult for us to meet. So over time, we sort of relaxed some of the restrictions, because we pay taxes for that property, both in Reed Field and Woodville, and it is a publicly owned, if you will, or our board is, our utility is public utility. So the board's kind of loosened up its restrictions over the years. So first, we tried the snowmobile access, which is the easiest thing to do, because it involves zero work on our part. The board's been a little weary of allowing foot traffic in, but because I live in Reed Field and I'm familiar with the work of the Trails Committee, I was able to express my opinion about the effectiveness of the refill trails and how well-maintained. Trash everywhere is not, they haven't all gone sideways. They've had some landowner disputes over the years that have been remedied and so on and so forth. So I think the board thought that these were good partners to work with and to negotiate an agreement. The purpose of the year-to-year agreement is exactly like we have in the Snowmobile Committee. So if something gets out of hand, we have an opportunity to allow that activity to cease and desist. This is very much like the Esker Trail. It's basically a footpath. There's really not much going to be out there to start, apart from some flagging, and don't invest, I don't see any investment on the part of the town itself. There's a lot that, I'm on the road committee for the town, and I'm certainly sensitive to taxes people pay. I know they don't really want to pay for trails in the woods. Isn't theirs, you know, so. And as far as a kiosk, I'll find a way to make that happen if I just have to build it myself and do that, that's no big deal. So it looks like we have good agreement. I sent Eric a link to the drawing, so Catherine, I guess she'd be able to, I don't know if he can share that or not on his screen, but regardless, he can send it to everybody on the call, and you can look at it here later. So with that, this is the first foray into public access to Carlton Pond, and our board's taking it very seriously, and I hope it taking it very seriously, and I hope it, it works out.
Thank you so much, Brian. Greg?
Good evening, everybody, Greg Durgan from Trails Committee. This agreement falls right into line with our Trail Strategic Plan, and our goals and objectives to increase recreation opportunities through trails, mostly in town, but this is our first venture outside, and God, G-A-U-D, and Brian have been fantastic to work with. Trails Committee voted the other night to support this unanimously. Rob Peel, I think it's longer than a year. Rob has taken the lead on this and has worked and attended meetings with God and so forth, so we're excited about this. And we're cognizant of the fact about money, and this will be built with labor, volunteer labor. I've got your names, numbers, and phone numbers, email addresses, you'll all be out there with us, except for Brian, he's done his, he's done his share. So, just wanted to point that out to everybody.
Sweat taxes, as they call them, right?
Thank you very much, yeah.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the Carlton Pond's trail, Carlton Pond Trails between Greater Augusta Utility District and the Town of Reedfield, Maine, as presented and authorized the town manager to sign.
I second that.
Great, we have the motion on the floor to approve and sign this Trails Agreement. Are there any other comments from the public about that? And then I'll ask if there's any discussion from the board. Seeing none, is there any discussion from the board on the motion that's on the floor?
I just want to say, I just want to say that I, I appreciate everyone's work, and I'm glad that we can continue to uphold the tradition of Reedfield being outdoors, so thank you.
If there is any interest, I, I did get that link, and it's open on my screen, if Bill can do sharing, but you, you might not want to see it right now, but it's available if you do.
Let's just email it later to anyone who requests it, but do you mail it to all board members and Trails Committee folks? They may already have it. Great, good, I will call the roll, Dennis?
Yes.
Catherine?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Ralph?
Enthusiastic, yes.
Bruce is a yes, thank you so much, thank you for all the work that went into this, and it sounded like it took a year or so, and as I said, I was kind of jonesing to get in there and explore some, I've driven by there so many times, and with the logging, it kind of flushed it out a little bit more, so you could see things through the woods, so I'm curious about that, and I look forward to walking in there. Thanks an awful lot.
Thank you, Brian.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, everyone.
Okay. Nice job, Rob. Nice job, Brian.
Thank you, Greg.
Great, we'll move on to public communication. Are there any members of the public who would like to speak tonight on any issue? Sean, please.
Even everybody, Sean, Rec Committee. Eric stole most of my thunder, but I have other stuff to talk about too, so that's okay. But, so, I'm so happy that we worked together to start getting the beach plowed this year in the winter, I, I thought it was the best kept secret until I went down there to work on Sunday, and oh my gosh, was there so many trailers there moving stuff in and people going out. We started work on Friday evening, thanks to Matt LaJoy's X energy and that cold to work, start working on the ice shrink. We flooded it for the first time, and extended it on Saturday, because we realized the beach had really receded in the fall, so where we tried to flood it at first, I just hit dirt, so we had to move it out and extend it even further. If you go onto the Reedfield Rec page, you should see some great drone footage of some kids out there playing yesterday.
And on the homepage of Facebook for Reedfield.
Thank you, sir, I appreciate that. So, we're going to be obviously back out there tomorrow shoveling that, with support from Eric, he got it, he got us the materials to keep that cleared off. For this winter, we're going to work on it all February, we think it's going to be something we should be able to maintain for the month. You know, it's rough, because none of us have ever made an ice shrink before, but you know, we're, we're, it was, my kids rode it for six hours yesterday, so they slept great last night. Other than that, Rec has really worked towards our thoughts about the development of the Church Road Fields and increasing access there. We've started making calls to surveyors to, to get information about what it would take, what the fields and take, what the old plan was, if any of that's any good. So, what we, what we intend to propose at the Budget Committee, there's so many words I couldn't say there, what we intend to propose at the Budget Committee next month is that we're going to put up the $2,000 for the surveying out of our reserve funds, and then as we start, hopefully with support from the Budget Committee and you guys, to start fundraising for the expansion of the fields, we're going to put $10,000 from the Rec funds towards the startup of that fundraiser process. We're really excited about it, we hope that this is something we can achieve in the next two to three years and get really some good movement and more access in those fields, and just help keep making it a bit of a focal point down there. So, that's about it really, but I just hope we can get some support with that, and we can start moving forward.
Sean, thank you for that update, go ahead Catherine, please.
Awesome, that's it.
Great, so yes, an awesome here, and we have skating, I, I didn't even know that coming into this meeting, so that's absolutely great, and apparently it allows children to sleep through the night, so what a bonus, right?
Yeah, bring them, yes, adopt a recommendation, six hours of skating.
Six hours. That's not required, that's voluntary, voluntary six hours.
Great, are there any other members of the public who would like to address the Select Board? Seeing none, we'll move on. We're going to move to Old Business, and I meant to, at the very beginning of the meeting, to add a piece of new business, and that would be 21079, and I wanted to add a discussion about nonprofit petitions, which I expect to be a very short discussion of five minutes or so. Is there tolerance from the board for me to add that to the agenda?
Yep.
Great, and if we have to extend time, I imagine it'll only be brief, and we'll add that at the very end. So, Old Business, consider any potential ordinance changes for the June Town Meeting. We've talked about that we would review the tax relief one, and we expect that there will be changes to land use, as they generally have language updates and sometimes updates that are associated with conforming to state law. You have the list in your packet, and this really is not only just considering potential ordinance changes, but policy changes as well, but we'll just start with ordinances. Were there any other ordinances that you want the Select Board to attend to and look at within our budget work and warrant work over the next couple of months? This is kind of giving me direction to schedule stuff into our agendas. Yes, Catherine, please.
I think there might be two dates that are wrong, I'm sorry Eric, but I'm pretty sure we did the Reedfield Waste Disposal and Recycling Ordinance since 2011, when we added Fayette, so I think there's an updated version to that. And same thing with the Animal Control Ordinance, I think that had a major revision in the last three or four years before, just before Robin left. They're both dated 2011.
Catherine, we're going to have to make you Town Official Historian. You just pull this stuff right out of your knowledge, and it's, it's.
I worked on them, so I know that we did something, I just don't know when.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
You might be shocked that it was 2011, and you did work on it then. Getting back to the discussion at hand, other than the two ordinances that were previously mentioned, tax relief and land use, were there any others we wanted to pull out to do revision work on? Okay, let's move on to policies.
Bruce?
Yes.
It was my understanding at our last meeting, we talked about tax relief. I thought the sense of the meeting was that the, the structure is arcane, but given, given the, the subscription rate, that there really weren't any tweaks that we might do that would enhance this, at, at least in the near term. Am I correct in that, in that recollection?
You are correct, but I think the idea is that we would put it on the agenda, at least my understanding is, so that we would confirm that, if you will, that, that's our intention, and if there was a tweak, it would give anybody an opportunity to bring it up. I don't have any, maybe, maybe it's just kind of redundant, and you're correct, so we can move on without that, or we can entertain it as an individual item to review, it's up to the board really.
I would hope that we would keep it on our plate, given the sensitivity of the issue, and I've got a sneaking suspicion that, given the difficulty of the state process versus a simple tax raise, oh ho, that, that we ought to, we ought to at least keep it on our radar, and do everything we can to make sure that, that we're doing our level best to, to provide opportunities where it's warranted.
Okay, we will put it on our future agenda, so I mean, the next choice would be to either change it because we want to make a better fit, or not. My thinking probably is that we would not make a change this coming year, but do the best we can promoting it, and hopefully it will be perhaps even more used than in the past, because, well, sadly, we have some, some people probably who have had lower income in the last year, and we need to be sensitive to that, so we'll keep it, we'll keep it in our sights. Moving on to policies, were there any policies other than Select Board amendments, Select Board bylaws, that's going to be done, that we wanted to also entertain working on? Okay, great, we'll move on into New Business, and we're going to give the floor to you, Eric, we have a lot of information here, this is really our first significant look at the budget.
All right, did we have the Church Road sidewalk on there before the budget? It's in my packet before, but I don't know if that's.
I, I see it as an item further down, four items.
Yeah, no, I just got my, my queue here a little bit off. Well, then I will gladly talk about the budget, and now I know why, because I had included that version in your package as a PDF, so let me open up my PDF version of that same file, and that way we can be on the same page. Let's see.
Yeah, I think this, I mean, this first pass is really a highlights pass, so.
Yeah, yep, I, I won't get too deep into it, trust me.
Can you give us a sense of what degree of, how many committees have actually input budget items and departments?
Yeah, I mean, we've had, we've had input from nearly everybody, we're, we're down to the last few, the last few departments in, when we meet this coming Thursday with the Budget Committee actually, to do the third set of departments, we've been kind of pulling those together more quickly, and then after that, we'll move on to capital. But as it stands, we have this coming Thursday, Recreation and Open Space, Capital Improvement, Solid Waste, and Unclassified and General Assistance, the last departments that need to be addressed. So, everybody else has already been through, presented their information, and so we're probably 80% of, of the substantive work. Again, capital is a huge dollar portion, but we're only talking usually about a few projects that drive that, so we're doing very well. The, the budget overall, it's worth noting, one of the first things that I looked at was the, the tax base, and if you recall, last year we had done a 10% increase for the overall valuation, and that resulted in a nearly commensurate reduction in the mill rate. After discussing this with Dave Ledoux, we're very much in the same position again this year, we thought we might have to do it again, and now we're certain that the state valuations are increasing much more quickly than our, our own, so it's being recommended and reflected in this budget draft that we have another 10% increase in valuation, which again, results in a reduction in the mill rate. All those things equal, that, that shouldn't cause any impact to, to the taxpayer. Things that will cause an impact would be increased spending, or decreased spending, increased revenues, decreased revenues. The budget that I put forward with, you know, the numbers that we have available and that have been presented and prepared for the meeting on Thursday, shows overall a very sizable increase in certain revenue streams, things like motor vehicles, we had cut back quite a bit in FY '21 on our estimates, and I think we're still being conservative this time around, but we're more accurately reflecting what, what the revenue streams will likely be, and, you know, being responsive to the idea that we're going to have some drops in other areas, particularly and most likely would be the tax, the tax impact, and so we did keep the overlay high, the overlay also is what is used to fund abatements, so we expect we're going to have a lot of abatements, that's been reflected, and we expect we're going to have solid revenue in certain areas, you know, like motor vehicles and like construction permits, but other areas have been, have been modified, so we looked at that pretty objectively. The other areas in revenue that have seen a sharp decrease are both the use of designated funds and the use of undesignated funds. If you remember last year, we, we did draw a lot out of the reserves, we're looking to do less of that this year, because we had anticipated a heavy draw for the undesignated fund, that money gets pulled out whether we have good revenues or not. The revenues that came in this year will help offset some of that, but we're being conservative, we don't know where it's going to land yet, so we're projecting a small decrease in that area, I guess I say small, but it's probably $50,000. The other area would be, as I said, the use of designated funds, we have fewer projects on deck this year, which means less expenditure in some ways, and so we're using less of those designated funds. Moving over to the revenue side, or the expense side, excuse me, most expense lines are very similar to what they were in the past, notable areas of, of change are in wages, we have increases for cost of living and merit, which is wonderful for the employees, and so also we have health insurance and other personnel-related expenditures that are increasing, and though they, that happens every year. Outside of that, we are looking to increase the amount of hours that we have for the code officer, but also you have a very large increase in that expense area. Well, demand is up, absolutely, we're seeing the most construction I've ever seen in my, you know, five years here, but we're also partnering with Wayne, and this is the first year that that partnership is fully reflected in the budget, so we're effect, we're essentially seeing a doubling of the expense, but we're also seeing revenues come in to offset that, so that's another area that people will notice when they look at this. Outside of that, capital projects and debt service are two areas where we see increases and decreases. Right now, debt service is going down about $80,000, and use of capital expenditures out of, out of our general budget is going up about the same, so we always try to maintain about half a million dollars, maybe more, in combined spending for debt service or capital in order to meet our long-term facility needs. So, those things are, are more or less the same, a little bit of difference between which one is, is the primary funding source. And then, moving down to the rest of the budget, just really small changes here and there, the net impact of all of this is that once we account for, for everything, without looking at municipal borrowing, and I did in the budget provide a sample of what a $1 million bond would look like over the next 15 years, basically. Outside of that, we would see a small increase in, in, in the tax rate, or in what people pay in real taxes, right? So if you paid $2,500 last year, the way it stands, you might pay $2,600 this year, something like that, so.
Actually, actually, the example that you gave on a $242,000 home was a $75 increase.
Home was a seventy-five dollar increase.
Good, I'm going off the cuff, so thanks for looking at the real numbers. Um, uh, yeah, so that's a really good point. Uh, I think that that could be completely absorbed, uh, and even lowered if we were to pursue municipal borrowing over a, a ten or fifteen-year period for, uh, a number of those capital projects that we're looking at. Uh, and that's, that's something that we won't discuss tonight, but that's the one area where I see the most potential. We could also look at the use of the undesignedated and designated funds, but those are tricky in their own right. Uh, borrowing is a clearer, uh, and a, and a path that we've discussed quite a bit already. So that's, that's the budget in a nutshell. Uh, I'm really happy with where we are. Um, I, we heard at the budget committee meeting, um, last week that, uh, the school is go, uh, trying for a flat budget and, uh, they're early on in the process, but that's their goal. Um, it was also our goal, is our goal. Uh, so I think, um, we're going to be very close to that, if not, if not realize that.
Great, I mean, and, and that was kind of the marching order to try to be as least impactful on taxpayers and fiscal twenty-two as possible. So I commend all the work that's done to date, and we will be meeting with the school board and hearing an update from them in March, and I want to let Catherine, uh, go ahead, please, Catherine.
Just a quick question because I can't remember, which means maybe we need to retitle it. But the two bonds that are listed, the twenty-twenty municipal bond and the twenty-twenty-one, what was the twenty-twenty-one one? That was for the library and the fire station project, but what was the twenty-twenty bond for? You're muted.
That's good, you can't hear me cussing. Um, the, uh, so what you're looking at is, is the, 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 the bond that we did pass, um, uh, for in twenty-twenty, uh, for the fire station and library. The twenty-twenty-one refers to basically the, 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 the year in which we would be borrowing if that bond were approved in June, at the June twenty-twenty-one town meeting. So that red bar or that series of red bars represents the speculative one million dollar borrowing over that period of time.
And what are we borrowing that money for, or have we not put that out yet?
That's, that's entirely up to the board if and when we do it. Uh, it's just a example of what, um, okay, it's just, it's just for discussion purposes. Uh, I.
It's a, it's a early placeholder.
Yeah.
And then we will, we will have the CIP meeting, which would help address this.
Okay, so it, it's a proposed bond.
Yeah.
It's not even a proposed bond, it's a, it's, it's an, it's an example bond.
Okay.
That's right, and there should be an asterisk somewhere on there that links to the note at the bottom. Uh, so, um, yeah, a lot of information, but it's a very good question.
Okay, thank you. Perfect, I appreciate it. Looks really great. Good job to everybody involved.
Ralph, please.
Uh, just a quick question about health insurance, Eric. I know that the rate increase numbers at this point in budget development are generally super inflated. But what are they and do you anticipate there will be any reduction?
Uh, well, I have to look at the actual detail on that. Um, generally speaking, I think that what we have, um, is, is fairly accurate. At this point, I'll have to check with Teresa, but by now we, we almost always have reliable numbers from MMA, at least for, um, th- through December, um, not, excuse me, not December, through, uh, June. So, uh, I think that what we have is fairly reliable. I don't think we're going to see much of a reduction. Uh, health insurance costs have reliably gone up six to eight percent a year, every year.
That's what I was thinking, yeah, that we're probably going to be looking at a minimum of six to eight percent regardless of our experience.
Yeah, so we, we almost always budget that. Uh, one thing that I will note that relates to that is that we are seeing an increase in, um, uh, workers' compensation and unemployment insurance, uh, as a result of, of a couple of, uh, of recent issues. So, um, those things did affect our experience rating negatively. Um, and so we're having to, to, you know, we're self-funded, so when we dip too far into the bucket, they set us on a higher, uh, payment track to get back to, uh, to where we have a positive balance. So, uh, that's going to be hitting us as well.
We have stock loss for, for that self-funding provision. I, I assume we're not going to go beyond a point where we'll, we won't be able to cover the bill, so to speak.
Yeah, well, that's why they're increasing the month, uh, the annual payments so that we can correct for that.
Any other questions on the budget or comments at this point? Well, we'll be in an increasing, um, amount of, uh, um, taking a look at this, uh, over the next couple of months. Um, I'm hoping that, uh, as we get a little bit further into, uh, the whole situation, uh, that we may be able to, at least on the final meeting, uh, I, I can't say it'll be a Zoom, uh, public hearing or a floor public hearing, but I'm hoping we figure out a pathway to getting as full a, uh, comment as we possibly can from a public. Um, great, we'll move on. Thank you very much for all the work and for all the committees and for what the budget committee has been doing. Uh, basically weekly they meet now, right?
Lately, yes.
Yeah, great. Um, we're looking at a main DEP waste diversion grant for food waste composting at the Reed Field Transfer Station. Um, I did not see that in my packet or it was out of order. Um, but go ahead, Eric, if you would, uh, or Catherine, are you familiar with this as well?
Uh, Catherine's very familiar and I'll actually, I'd, I'd be happy to let her cover this, um, because she was the, uh, one of, very instrumental in making this happen.
Go ahead and unmute though, Catherine.
Thank you. Did it not get put in the packet?
I saw it.
I thought I had seen it, but now I'm trying to scroll and find it and I'm not seeing it.
Yeah, I'm.
It should have been just after the budget.
Okay, it's on page fifty-five. Uh, sixty-three, if anybody's reading or looking for it. Um, so back in, when was it, Eric?
November-ish?
Probably October, November. We didn't have much time.
No, but, uh, it came up and Eric and I looked at it and I wrote the sort of wordy part and the proposal, the history, the concept, and Eric did all of the figures, all of the numbers and, um, all of the wage kinds of pieces, the employee parts of that. Um, and out of sixteen proposals, I think they said they funded seven, two, three, yeah, six in full. We were one of the in-falls. Um, I, I'm guessing a piece of that was that we had a really good matching part because we're matching approximately fifty percent. Um, that's not out-of-pocket costs because those costs are all from things that we're already doing. We're just changing some of the work hours. So some of Anna and Ben's time, uh, will be devoted to part of this project. Some of Karen and Mike's time, some of Eric's time as the manager. I mean, so that all counts. Um, this is concurrent with a proposal, um, that we were also picked by the Mitchell Institute for Sustainability of Food Waste, maybe, or Food, Food Security in Maine. Uh, Thomas Colleges participating and Kennebec Council of Governments, um, are all working together. And Reed Field was chosen as a site for them. Um, and the Solid Waste Committee, uh, at our last meeting a couple of weeks ago, agreed that we would like to be part of that. Um, so we have two things going at the same time for the same purpose. Um, the Mitchell Institute is going to help us with promotion. Um, they're going to help us with staying on track and being focused and keeping the ball rolling, so to speak. Um, and with tracking all sorts of things and using this as a case study to be used amongst others that have already taken place and some that are going on concurrently, um, across the state so that other towns can see what we did, what worked, and hopefully not what didn't work. Um, hopefully this will work well. Um, and so we're getting, um, approximately twenty thousand dollars from the state of Maine through this grant to help us, uh, buy some equipment. Um, those major things are composting cages, if you will. Um, I think there are a hundred of those for people to use to compost at home. And I think five hundred containers that we can use for residents to, um, collect waste and bring it to the transfer station. And this is for all three towns. Um, remember that it's the Reed Field Transfer Station, but we are a tri-town group. Um, so we included all of those residents in our estimates for things. Um, there's some great impacts here. We can reduce food waste going out. Um, that, one of the things the Mitchell Institute is really big on is on having people also start focusing on what it is you're wasting and that there's a cost to that. Um, a cost to the environment. There's a physical cost to your pocket when we're buying food and then throwing it away because we're not using it. Um, that there might be food that we have that could be donated rather than wasted. Um, if we know we're not going to use it, it can be donated to food pantries. Um, they're also interested in, uh, us looking at community gardening, and all of this can be done at the same time as we're developing this super compost. Um, so education's a huge role. The way Eric wrote into the grant was awesome, um, probably helped us win the whole thing. Um, is that everything comes with education. So if you want a bucket to take home and collect food waste, you've got a little bit of a educational meeting. You have to stop in for a few minutes and learn about what goes in, what doesn't go in, how long you should keep it, where you drop it off, pick it up, et cetera. Um, and then run some also educational sessions for residents who don't want to lug their compost around. Um, and want to do it at their home, so there'll be some education involved so that we'll have a greater level of success. Um, last thing, the head of the, I don't know his title, Eric, but Mark King, right? Who works for DEP.
Yeah, that's right.
Um, lives not in Reed Field, but nearby.
Nearby, and I think his title is something about organics management.
Right, for the state. Um, and he is nearby and he's very interested, so he is going to be available to help us a lot, um, at no cost because that comes with the grant management piece. Um, so this is all really great for Eric and Karen being the manager and assistant manager at the transfer station. Um, so they'll be supported a lot and not be out there trying to create everything on their own.
Great, thank you, Catherine. Uh, so, uh, our action tonight is to consider accepting that main DEP grant, waste diversion grant for food waste and composting at the transfer station. Do I have a motion in regards to that, please?
So moved.
It's been moved and then do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, Bruce, can I, can I have a couple of quick comments here before?
Absolutely, absolutely. Once we have a motion on the floor and seconded, it's discussed beforehand. And if you ever catch me moving beyond that, make sure I stop. Go ahead, Ralph.
I think this is a really great idea. Uh, anything that takes waste out of the mainstream that's going in the landfills and creating more methane gas is a, is a really good idea. I just have a couple of cautionary notes as we go down this road, which I really do believe we should do. Uh, having had a little experience in this in a past life on a, as a member of a board of directors on a waste energy plant that did this, uh, as a sidebar in addition to recycling. I don't see any provisions in here or the cost, which I'm pretty sure we will incur for vector, AKA critter control. Uh, this is going to be a little bit bigger than your home composter in your backyard. And when we start putting this monument, even though it's relatively small in terms of the total amount of food waste that's generated in the region, it will be a significant impact, I believe, on that site. And we should be prepared to be able to deal with it. I think, uh, I think we better have, uh, a contingency plan to, to deal with, uh, rodents, birds, and whatever else is going to visit those piles. And the other thing is, uh, it does create odor. Mercifully, it's not in a highly developed area, but there are some residential dwellings in close proximity. And, uh, we should be prepared to, to mitigate that to the, to the best extent we can because I guarantee you it will happen.
We have considered those things, um, Ralph, and that's one of the things that Mark King from DEP will be helping us with. Um, there's a whole different plan for where the compost, how the compost will be. It will be where it is, but expanded, and it will be done in a different manner than it is currently. Um, and according to him, if we do this properly, we can pretty well control critter and odor issues. Um, so it, it, we, they're trying to get us into the best management practices to control those things because that's certainly something people are very aware of. So.
My suggestion is that you have those in place before the, before bucket one goes in there so that you will be, uh, excuse me, not you, we will be ready to, uh, to deal with the issues that I am pretty sure are, are going to result. Uh, I think the overall outcome is worth the, worth the initiative, but, uh, we should be prepared for this because it will happen.
Yep, well, there's a three-month, um, kind of preparation period here for, well, one, we have to wait for the snow to go away. Um, but also for people to have some more training and to get materials here and then to prepare the site. Um, so we'll look to you for some expertise.
Well, I know who to call. I'm not an expert.
Great, thank you. Any other questions or comments on, uh, the motion that's on the floor to, uh, accept this diversion grant? Seeing none, I'll call a roll. Dennis?
Yes.
Catherine?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Ralph?
Yes.
Bruce is a yes. Great, thank you. We'll go ahead and consider bids for the sale of the old town pickup truck. There is a high bid of twelve fifty, uh, that's one thousand two hundred and fifty. That's, um, been recommended, uh, by Anna. Um, I would go ahead and move that we, uh, accept that bid.
I'll second that.
Is there any discussion on that? Seeing none? Dennis?
Yes.
Catherine?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Ralph?
Yes.
Bruce? Um, I did not, um.
Bruce, what was your vote?
The, the vote was five zero.
Uh, you just said Bruce, you didn't say yes or no.
Oh, okay, I probably nodded my head or something silly like that, but it was yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, I, uh, I failed to word the motion that I, in the way that I wanted to, which was that if that, um, uh, if there's a refusal on that bid to go to the second highest bid. Um, so I, I'll just go ahead and move that, uh, if the previous motion, uh, bid, uh, doesn't perform, uh, that the second highest would be accepted.
Second.
And that is one thousand and fifty dollars, by the way. Um, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion, Ralph?
Uh, what's this thing worth, this scrap?
Uh, less than a thousand fifty dollars.
Okay.
Uh, i- i- it's probably in the three to five hundred dollar range if that.
Great. Okay, good. I'll call the roll. Dennis?
Yes.
Catherine?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Ralph?
Yes.
Bruce is a yes. Um, I'll try to consolidate my motions properly next time. Um, now we have some news, uh, and it is about accepting a main DOT grant for a sidewalk on Church Road, uh, and I'm going to let, uh, Eric give us some background on this. Uh, there is, um, a proviso in, uh, this for, um, some of the grant administration, I, I guess we would call it, Eric, um, or, or job administration upfront that we can have done, uh, within the scope of, of the plan. Um, rather than having Eric sort of be clerk of the works on it. Uh, and I think that's a very wise, uh, choice, and I'll speak to that if we get to that in the discussion. Um, I think this was a goal of, uh, the select board stretching back about four, three to four years ago. Um, and we've been putting in this, um, uh, application to DOT, um, yearly uh, and improving upon it, uh, as we, as we learned how scoring work and so on and so forth. It was scored rel- relatively high to begin with, but, you know. It was scored relatively high to begin with, but you know, only a certain number of projects get funded every year and, uh, and this is like building a school, if you will. Um, you just keep putting in and putting in until you get there. Um, and so dogged determination and, um, uh, grant application approval, um, uh, was good. And I, and I think, um, uh, there have been a number of hands involved in this and I want to thank them all. And so Eric, I'm going to turn this to you for just a brief presentation and, uh, and then we can talk about questions and see if there's a motion.
Thanks, Bruce. Um, yeah. So thanks to the select board for, um, continuing to support this and keep it on their list of goals. That's been really helpful. Uh, also, uh, Romaine Turn and, uh, Darcy Widdamore, uh, were actively involved with this, uh, helping to, um, shape the initial application and inform, uh, the, the discussion, uh, as we went along. So, uh, it definitely has been a, a group, uh, effort. Uh, it's been supported by the age friendly group. And, uh, and generally it's been a very positive, uh, well-received project from the beginning because it really does connect, uh, a major recreational resource. Um, one that's going to be improved over the next couple of years if the rec board, um, does what they, well, I'm certain they will. Um, and, uh, we're going to see more use and this needs to be connected to the, the sidewalk that connects a lot of our, um, you know, Route 17 corridor. So, uh, always popular with DOT, the only issue, the only issue has been funding. Uh, and, um, uh, it really did, uh, take just a few years to get the funding uh, to the point where, okay, we're in the queue long enough and we, we've increased our score, um, for, you know, incremental, you know, one or two points, uh, here and there, but it finally paid, paid off. So, um, really this is just the connectivity, um, proposal, uh, and it's for, uh, less than a half mile of sidewalk. Uh, this first phase that's been approved is for the design and planning and, um, uh, securing of, of easements and, and right-of-way, um, confirmation, I guess is the way to put it. So the DOT, uh, provided an 80/20 match. If we accept this, uh, we would be on the hook for about $9,000. Uh, they would be paying 36,000. And, uh, their initial project estimate for this, uh, was about half of what it is now. Uh, so that being said, they did include this, uh, second statement, uh, that yes, you're approved for this part, but here's what the rest of it's going to cost. Uh, and they want to know that the board, uh, the town, uh, is committed to pursuing that. It's not a, not a guarantee that it's going to happen or that we'll be able to raise the money. They just want to see a good faith effort on our part to do that. Uh, right now we have $40,000 set aside already for the project. Uh, so for the total cost of say $85,000 for the entire project for our 20% match. After we spend this nine, we've got 30. We really only need to come up with about $50,000 more. Very round numbers there, but, um, I'm just trying to put this into perspective. So I think that for a goal, um, that, that, uh, that's been helped us along with as much, um, uh, interest, uh, as there has been in it, uh, I would hope that the board, uh, would be willing to uh, support this and, and move forward with this commitment, knowing that, uh, the first part we would be on the hook for. Uh, and this gets us to the point where we can then make a better determination, uh, about the, the actual alignment of the project, which is a big question, uh, and the ultimately that the full cost. So, um, the other piece that Bruce mentioned was this idea of, of a, a check yes or no, uh, for, um, project management. And given the other work that, that I have before me over the next couple of years, I do think that it would be the most beneficial to the town to have the DOT manage this project. We still, as a town, will be responsible for, uh, the right-of-way research. Uh, that's something that, that we, we would always have to be responsible for. I do have my local, um, locally administered, administered projects certification. I will be renewing that in April. And that's the certification that's required to manage a project like this. I think it's important for me to be aware of what's going on, uh, and to support it as much as possible. But, uh, I, I agree with Bruce completely that this is probably best left, uh, in the hands of the, the, the main DOT with active participation from the town, um, when and where we can. So, uh, that's really what I have, uh, as a summary. Uh, again, the, the total project cost that they're estimating right now is 438,000. So it's actually probably closer to 80, uh, for our overall, um, obligation. So, um, I'll leave it there.
I'm going to go ahead and move that we, uh, accept the main DOT grant for the sidewalk on Church Road.
Second.
Thank you. So now we're open for discussion and the first point of discussion, uh, I would have one, but Catherine, you go first, please.
No, go ahead, Bruce.
Um, just very briefly, I wanted to address what Eric said about connectivity. Um, I think that's very important, but I also think it's important that as we talk to towns, folks about the town people about this, that there is a safety aspect here too. Um, people are walking up and down Church Road, whether or not we do that connectivity. Um, so the people are doing the connecting and we're just, if you will, making a safer, uh, situation for them. Also, um, I mean, I live off the Church Road. I do know that the hill has a lot of gravity on it. So, uh, for whatever reason, it ends up with a lot of speed on lower Church Road. And, um, I think sidewalks typically have some, uh, traffic calming, um, um, benefit as well. So, um, you know, we're not talking about which side this sidewalk's going to go on or anything of that nature at this point. Um, but we are talking about, uh, uh, some potential safety benefits as well. So Catherine?
Two questions. Do we know what the added cost would be? Or is that included if they administer rather than local administration?
Uh, the cost is, there is no additional cost for them to administer the project. Their statement to me was that typically a locally administered project, um, you know, might be better received. Uh, but again, uh, even, even if they're doing the administration, uh, we're going to be doing the communication in large part. And I think that's something that we can do well at, and Bruce makes some very good points about safety. And that's really what this does come down to. So, um, I hope that answers your question.
Absolutely. And so, um, timing for me on this, this is for this coming fiscal year cycle. Um, to have this design and engineering phase take place. Is it going to be considered for construction? I, I know that in the paperwork, it says that if we get this in timely, we have a better chance of being funded. So will it be considered in the next year or is it a two-year cycle for the state till they would consider construction?
So, uh, in speaking with, uh, Michael Burge, who is the, um, uh, one of the, um, people involved with this, but also on our road committee, which has nothing to do with the grant award. Uh, he, um, has stated that, uh, the, the construction phase will be 2024. So we have several years, two or three years to, to really work this out, uh, and, um, put that money aside and, and finalize the, the work on this.
Okay. So that, that's really important because that's interesting for the CIP and for spending. Thank you.
It's, it's still a long-term, if you will, endeavor. Um, but I think actually with the initial sidewalk, it was a number of years, if I recall, until, and I remember Catherine, I believe you were on the board at the time. We all gathered to walk the entire sidewalk and cut a ribbon, uh, at the town hall at the time. And so I look forward to being able to do that again, um, as, as time goes on, but it will take a few years.
Ralph has a question.
Yes, Ralph. I'm sorry. I did not see you.
That's all right. Uh, I'm slouching in my seat.
You know, you're the tiniest person on my screen.
It's.
But you're a big, you're a big presence. So please go ahead.
I've stretched out on the table yet. I just, I just want to follow up on Catherine's question about administrative fees and make sure I understand Eric's answer completely. It's in my experience, anytime any DOT gets involved in any project and admin function, they take some money off the top of that grant. Did I understand you, Eric, to say that they are not going to charge us for being administrator of this project? Although I agree that they should be.
They, they absolutely will not charge us. Um, I, I did talk directly with the, uh, the program administrator, uh, Patrick Adams about that. Uh, and confirmed with him that, that it would be no cost. Uh, he said, you know, i- if you feel as, as though it's going to be a, a burden for the town to take on that, that role. It's best to let DOT manage that in part because they want to see this be successful, as successful as it can be. Uh, they don't want to have stalled projects, uh, any more than we do. So, uh, they, they, um, they support that. There is no cost if we make that decision.
They start this one up in my book.
Um, so one follow-up question, um, when we authorize Eric to sign this, he has to put in a description of our local match commitment, including the source approval date, et cetera. Um, do we need to mention that in our motion?
It would make it easier to communicate if, um, you specified that that, uh, $9,000 match would be coming from our sidewalk reserve that was established when we applied for this initially.
Please proceed with, please proceed with an amendment, Catherine.
Okay. I'd like to amend the motion on the floor, uh, to include the following. The town of Reed Field will pay the $9,000 matching, the $9,000 local match amount required for federal funding from our designated Church Road sidewalk reserve account.
That's clear. I'll second that amendment. Is there any discussion on that amendment? Seeing none, we'll vote on the amendment. Dennis?
Yes.
Catherine?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Ralph?
Yes.
Bruce is a yes. So now we have a, they had an amended motion on the floor. Uh, is there any further discussion on the motion or any need for restatement?
Yes. Remind us what we're voting on.
What we're voting on as amended, uh, is that we will consider accepting a main DOT grant for a sidewalk on the Church Road. And the amendment states that the $9,000 comes out of, uh, the sidewalk reserve that exists. Okay. Great. Good. We'll proceed with a vote. Dennis?
Yes.
Catherine?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Ralph?
Oh, yes.
Bruce? I'll, I'll do an oh yes too. That sounds like a, an interesting, good. Um, this is exciting.
It is.
Absolutely.
Yeah. You kidding me?
And that was something on our, our goals that we worked on this year. And we were really talking about the need for it and the safety and how concerned we are. And then here it comes. It's just like, yes.
Yeah. 21077 is to consider a writ of execution for property owned by Ed Munson. Um, and so, uh, Eric, since you asked the attorney what a writ of execution is, and knowing that no one will be executed, um, go ahead and tell us what we're doing here. Um, and this is, uh, sort of pro forma, I believe, but we do need to do it.
Absolutely. Uh, so writ of execution is just a fancy, uh, and antiquated term for a particular form of a lien. That's, that's it. Uh, it basically allows a sheriff to collect any, um, uh, or a law enforcement official to collect any assets that this individual may have, uh, that are, uh, for sale or saleable. Uh, and to actually have them sold to then collect the money. So it, it's basically a, a peculiar, um, form of lien. Uh, neither she nor I were sure how we came back nine years ago to get this particular instrument in place. Uh, but, uh, it's there. It stays with the property and, uh, this allows us to, um, uh, release that lien, provided that the $6,000, uh, fee, 6,900, I think, uh, is paid. Uh, and what will happen is this will be provided, once I sign it, to the, uh, real estate attorney that will be completing this, the, the real estate transaction. Uh, once they do their thing and everybody gets their checks, we get a check for the full amount. Uh, and they issue this, uh, a lien waiver to, uh, the, uh, the, the property owner that they can then record.
So really it's a condition of sale, not that we put on, but that needs to be there. And, um, it gives, it gives us our tax dollars.
That's right. The, at least a portion of the fee that was spent, uh, dealing with a number of, uh, issues there. I think there was some livestock and perhaps some junkyard stuff going on. But again, this was, you know, nine or 10 years ago. So, um, ancient history, but we're happy that's coming, coming to get paid.
Great.
Eric, I seem to recall that we had already taken payment for this. Was that for a different judgment that we took payment from this individual?
Uh, I have, that's news to me. Um, I'll tell you what, I will look into that. Um, I, I don't know the history here. Um, so I will talk to Teresa, uh, and see if there was, we can certainly look back through Trio and see if there were any payments. He hasn't, hasn't objected to, to this so far, but maybe he forgot. Um, we'll, we'll look into it.
Would forget a $6,000 payment, but, um, I know that there were several issues. I know that Karen Peterson was our animal control officer at the time. Um, I know it was with our former town manager at that time. And I'm just curious if there was a a different situation and this is a second one, or if this is all the same.
I guess I don't know. Uh, one thing I will say is that when I told, um, Karen that this was going to be paid, she was ecstatic that it was finally getting paid and the guy wasn't going to get away with it. So.
A second action.
Yeah, uh, I'll, I'll look into it more though. I don't want to, uh, overcharge somebody. So this is a sizable amount. So I'll, I'll double check with Teresa and see if there was any payment made, uh, by Ed in the past 10 years that would be similar to this amount.
Okay. And does this mean that the property's for sale? Is that why he's interested in making sure this gets taken care of?
Yeah, it's basically being sold.
It's, yeah.
And this is the, um, property on Route 17?
Yes.
The falling down barn.
Yeah, all that. I mean, I hope it's not condos, but at least it'll probably get cleaned up. So.
That's good because that's pretty unsafe. Great. Um, I would, uh, make a motion that we authorize the town manager to sign the discharge of execution lien as presented.
Second.
I second.
And moved and seconded to, um, discharge the writ of execution for the property, uh, so stated, um, in, in your packet. Um, is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none. Dennis?
Yes.
Catherine?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Ralph?
Yes.
Bruce is a yes. And, uh, we have one item that I added to the agenda. We're at 757. Could I have a motion to extend by five minutes?
I would extend the meeting by five minutes.
Okay. Um, great. Dennis?
Yes.
Catherine?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Ralph? Bruce is a yes. Okay, great. Um, this is pretty straightforward and simple, so it may not even take that long. Um, I did have a discussion with one of the nonprofit profits that, well, you know, by petition, uh, they come to the town and they ask for a certain level of support. Um, and they can actually amend that support. Um, and Eric, I'm hoping that those earphones mean you're hearing me.
Yes, sir.
Okay. They can actually amend that support, I believe by 5% if they have some increased expenses or inflation or, or, uh, whatever. Um, and they do their original ask, if you will, by petition. Um, and then they would file an update letter if they want to have an increase. Uh, there's one group that was looking at more than, um, 5%. Um, and their question to me was, um, would we have to have a petition because COVID's in place? And Eric and I did discuss this. There might be a different way to do it, um, to show that there was support for the increase. I personally am, uh, a bit reluctant to change the policy wholesale, if you will, about taking up the, uh, amount for one group in doing this. Cause I believe by all rights you, you would then open yourself to what we probably have about nine or 10 groups that we do this with. Um, and so not that I'm thinking it's going to be a run of the bank or anything, but I, it, the process just needs to be very fair. So I think I need to tell them they need to go to petition if they want more. Um, or not me, but the town, if you will. Uh, but I did want to have the discussion because if anybody on the board felt differently, um, this isn't a some kind of ruling that comes from me or, or Eric necessarily. It is, it is policy. Thoughts?
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, if they want more, they should write the petition. Yeah, if they want more, they should write the petition, yes?
Yes.
Beyond that, Dennis, those requests are made at the outset of a, at the start of a budget process, and then come back, even though it's probably, given what we do for chair of organizations, I can't imagine it's a, it's a, it's a scary amount. It's a budget buster, but to come back in the middle of a fiscal year for an additional appropriation doesn't seem to me to be an appropriate move. I, in addition to should you petition, should you not, I just don't like the whole idea of, of having basically an open-ended situation as far as budget development is concerned.
Yeah, I don't think it's intentional in any way, shape, or form. As a matter of fact, what they, I, I won't identify the group, but I would support their increase, quite frankly, personally, but, and I would sign their petition in a heartbeat. But I, I, it's more process, and I've run into this on other boards where you have fiscal years that run different than calendar years, and volunteers who, for example, are sitting on a, a very small board, and they may not be as plugged in with our process as we would like or to think that they are. So I'm not making any excuses here, but I'm just saying that I think it's just mainly a timing thing, and I understand why they don't want to collect signatures during the pandemic. I will say, I did sign a petition at the post office about two or three weeks ago. There was somebody collecting petitions for, for something, and I actually signed at our post office here in Reedfield. So it's being done.
I understand. I just, if, if we're going to go down this road, why shouldn't we know the identity of, of the group that's going to make the request?
Uh, I mean, I'm happy to do that, but I guess my question really is far more general. Can they all do it? Because I don't think we would grant this, I don't think we should grant this request individually anyhow. That's my position.
If one can, it seems to be process defined by statute, anyone could. So then it becomes, then it becomes a matter of review and case-by-case decision-making.
Yeah.
I agree with you, Bruce. I think we have to stay fair to everybody, and we just can't, not one person do it.
Yeah, I mean, my recommendation to them is please ask for the 5% this year, and immediately, as COVID retreats, get your petition going.
Or just to ask for a higher amount next year so that they're covered.
That's what the petition would do.
Oh, okay. It's not a petition to get another amount this year.
That's correct.
Okay.
Well, then it's, then the point is actually moot, because they will be part of the budget process next year, and as part of their request, they should explain why there's an increase.
Right.
Yeah, they'll explain. I'm absolutely sure of it. But, and that's correct, Ralph. They were talking about this coming year. So they would have to wait until the, the warrant article that would be for that particular group or all of those groups would occur on the 22 in June.
Well, and that date's coming up right away for those letters to be in, right, Eric?
Yeah, it is. I think I have it right here on the schedule, which I try to keep handy. Let's see, warrant and ballots at the printer. Let's see. Deadline for legal review.
We've got one minute, Bruce.
Warrants is March 5th, so they have a month. So if they wanted to, they could spend a month collecting signatures. So I, I think it's possible. I, I do feel the same way that you need to be uniform, and that this is probably not a good precedent. I think that that 5% cap is reasonable, and it is a good way to help minimize the, what can be quite a barrage of requests for regular increases and even for additional, that same policy sets criteria for initial requests for funding as well. So I think it's there for, for good reason and does a good job of minimizing. Yeah, I won't say unnecessary, but it keeps things in order.
I don't think there's need for a vote at all. I, I wanted to get a sense of the board, and I have the sense. We all agree?
Yes.
Great. Okay. I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Just one thing, Eric, we're not on Channel 6 is being closed tomorrow.
That's because I haven't contacted Channel 6 or 5 or 13, or that, that's, that's my after-meeting.
Okay.
I got it on the website. That's all I had time for.
So move.
I have a motion to adjourn from Dennis, and I will take the so move from Ralph as the second. I'll call the roll, Dennis.
Yes.
Catherine?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Ralph?
Yes.
Bruce is a yes. Thank you, everyone who listened.
Thank you, guys.
For you being here.